Go ahead.
Welcome to the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I am this season's chair and reside in District Two. We will start our introductions of the other planning commissioners here in the boardroom to move to our online commissioners. We'll start down here with Commissioner Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
Helen Wheatley, District One.
Derek Day, District One.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
And do we have Mr. Jenner Pestinger online today?
I do not see him now.
All right, well, we still have enough or four quorums. So we're gonna move on to. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda, and as such, is there any revisions or changes that we would like to make?
I would like to suggest a change.
Okay.
I would like to move to remove items to approval of the meeting minutes because I'd like a little more time.
Okay, so we're gonna postpone approval of the meeting minutes for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three until our next Planning Commission meeting. Is that what you like to?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm just gonna strike that off. Is there any other changes to the agenda for tonight that anybody'd like to see? All right, with that, I entertain a motion on the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second and call for the vote.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Carmen. Commissioner Wheatley.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner.
All right, the agenda has been approved. All right, with that, we will move on to item number three, public communication. And we don't have anybody in the boardroom. Do we have some hands raised online for?
Yes.
You know, right, then let me run through the rules here. Those wishing to participate via Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the Planning Commission. You'll be promoted to the panelists when it's your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. A three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track time. And if staff, you could call out for the people that wish to address the Planning Commission, I appreciate it.
Sure. Loretta Suppanen is the first one.
You're up, Loretta Suppanen. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll address that. Loretta, are you there? You're on.
Yes, yes, I am. It's taking a little time for the technology to to work. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Loretta Suppanen's resident of the city of Olympia. I'm speaking on your agenda item related to the comprehensive plan scoping the scope of work. And I want to share three ideas I request that you add to the scope of work. First of all, please add a mid-cycle opportunity to revise the scope of work. When we do the two-year amendment docket, we have a mid, you know, a chance in the middle, a mid-cycle opportunity to change it. This is far more important for the comprehensive plan since it only happens on this comprehensive update every ten years. It's far more important to have a mid-cycle check-in to see if we need to make some changes. Second, I have two ideas that I'd like you to consider as additional options before you do the ranking of the existing optional items. And the first one is to include agriculture as an optional item. The staff may this evening tell you that agriculture is already on the required list because it is, as a matter of fact, a natural resource industry and and the natural resource chapter is included in the required list. But it is limited in that inclusion to consistency with existing plans, state law, and court rulings. And my request is to have an optional item so that we can go far beyond just the consistency with existing plans. And I'm doing that because the agricultural advisory committee has made some very specific requests to the Board of County Commissioners for some updates that go beyond existing plans or state law or court rulings. And the community wrote in quite a bit of comment on this as well. So that's my first one. And then the second request is to include in the scope of work the rights of nature and the rights of nature in land use planning. And this is kind of a new idea, so we might get very far on that this time around, but get it in there. The Rights of Nature is a movement that calls for giving the natural environment, trees, rivers, other things, a voice in land use decisions. And that voice is really like legal status to be able to speak on administrative decisions, for example. And the voice comes, of course, not from the trees, but just like corporations get to hire lawyers. That that some advocates would stand to speak for nature in proceedings that relate to land use. So thank you for considering these two additional options. Optional items to consider for the update and for considering a mid-cycle check-in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Suppanen. Do we have another member of the public that would like to address the Planning Commission?
Yes, the next person is Phyllis Farrell.
Ms. Farrell, you're up. Phyllis Farrell, are you there? There you are. You're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Greetings, Commissioners. I have some suggestions for the mid-cycle update on the comprehensive plan for two thousand and forty-five. I'm Phyllis Farrell. I'm a resident of Sunwood Lakes neighborhood in unincorporated Thurston County. Inasmuch as climate change was a major priority on the citizen survey, I'd like to suggest the element of climate change be included in the planning for the two thousand and forty-five comprehensive plan update. I realize this is an optional element, but inasmuch as Thurston County has adopted the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, including climate change and planning would be required in order to meet the adopted goals of the T C M P. Also, protecting agriculture was an important priority for the citizens completing the survey. Clear goals for agriculture conservation should be established as well as metrics for measuring loss. There should be mitigation for ag loss due to mining, housing, or industry. Also, planning should reflect the findings of the industrial land study. And the comp plan should strengthen tree policies. We are increasingly aware of the sequestration properties of trees as well as benefits for air quality, stormwater management, energy conservation, aesthetics, and property values. The implementation plan should add metrics for agriculture lands and trees in addition to housing metrics. And rights of nature, as was mentioned earlier, in land use decision-making should be included as a way to secure legal protection for the environment. And regarding land use, there should be no changes in land use designation or zonings without formal amendments to the comp plan. An additional request is to please review the county's policy on CIPA determinations. It's obvious many proposals and projects have environmental impacts, yet the frequent DNS designations appear counterintuitive to the public. So I guess a review and explanation of that policy making that public would probably help people understand what seems counterintuitive. Prioritize staff and resources to focus on the required elements plus climate change, the industrial land study, tree protection, and the implementation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. I do want to do a sound check now to make sure that Commissioner Pestinger is online. Are you there, Commissioner Pestinger?
Can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I first dialed into the public line instead of the private one.
No problem. Thank you for participating. All right, we're gonna move on to our next. Oh, we got one more.
Yep.
I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
Esther.
Mrs. Kronenberg, are you there? Mrs. Kronenberg, are you there? Are you muted still?
Yes, here. Hi, how are you? Thank you for volunteering your time for this important community service. I want to first say that I support everything that Miss Sepin and Miss Farrell just said. And I'm asking you also to include community rights and rights of nature as an optional element in the scope of work. I just had my water system checked this week. I'm on a well in a septic. And the well driller told me that he used to dig sixty to eighty feet down. He's now going to seventy to hundred twenty-five feet. So the aquifers are dropping because we're pulling out more than what's being recharged. And we see species going extinct and algae blooms and kids not even be able to touch the water at butt inlet because it's got so much dioxide from it. And we're losing farmland at an alarming rate to make room for warehouses of just exacerbating all these problems. So the rules we've been living under obviously aren't working. And we're handing our kids a much more degraded place and quality of life. For example, just for example, in McCounty this year, a developer is getting approval from Olympia with an M D N S to build houses on a toxic waste site on a drinking water aquifer before it's even been cleaned up. An LLC clear cut the headwaters of Green Cove Creek, even though it was a critical area. The port signed a seventy-five-year lease with a Hong Kong conglomerate to use tom waters failing aquifers to bottle soft germs. Developers are being handed tax breaks for market rate housing while people struggle to find housing and the schools have a thirteen million dollar deficit. And there's warehouses being proposed on vital and irreplaceable agricultural lands in the South County. All of these projects were vigorously opposed by the community, but to no avail. The community rights and rights of nature framework allows people, corporations, and higher is where people, corporations, and higher levels of government must respect the authority of a community to defend and enforce the collective rights of the community and the rights of its individual members and the natural environment. We need to have local decision-making power to attend to community meetings. Instead of giving tax subsidies for market rate housing, let's give them to the farmers who produce food and to the people who conserve their land to protect the aquifers, to activities that benefit everybody. Our community should be able to make those decisions for itself. By giving legal rights to nature, we'll protect the ability of ecosystems to function in a healthy and sustainable manner so that everyone in the ecosystem, including humans, can function in a healthy and sustainable manner. This has been done in Grand County. Pennsylvania passed the Rights of Nature ordinance to protect them from a corporation that wanted to inject fracking wastewater into the aquifer. And because the state government is also, it's legal, you know, they're still fighting that. And the whole nation of Ecuador also passed the Rights of Nation, uh, nature for the whole country. So it is a growing movement. It's being happening in more places than I seriously think we should be a leader in this and and seriously consider putting that as part of our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kronenberg. Do we have anybody else online?
Yes. Kristi.
Kristi, are you there?
Taking a minute. There we go. Now, can you hear me? Sorry for that delay.
We can. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to emphasize what Phyllis has said about, first of all, good evening. It's been a while since I've been able to chat with you. But I want to emphasize what Phyllis said about the CIPA. It it does appear on the surface that there tends to be a lot of, you know, DNS, you know, there's there's it's determined that there's no significant impact on a lot of the various evaluations that are made. And and so I'd just like to encourage that if it's a lack of funding, if it's, you know, staff are overwhelmed, what that might be to remedy that situation that the really deep dive, which is, you know, the the check and balance for what we do, that we really do a deep CIPA evaluation and determine what really is significant or not. As an accountant, we use the term not material. And you can pass on a lot of things and call it not material to the financial presentation. But if you add up too many of those, it does become material. So those are just my thoughts regarding CIPA. It is really a critical component of evaluating the various projects and rulings that we make in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online?
Do not see any other hands.
All right. Well, with nobody else wishing to address the Planning Commission, we will move on to our next item of business this evening, which is a work session on Thurston, two thousand and twenty, twenty forty-five with a planning manager, Chris Chappell.
All right. Chair Casino, we have ten minutes before we can start the public hearings.
Not enough time to get anything really moving.
Not enough time.
That is fair. Why don't we?
Take a recess.
I'm sorry?
Recession for ten minutes.
Do you want to do staff updates or calendars?
Sure, that works too.
All right, let's move on to ten and do staff updates then.
So I do not have any staff dates. When I backstop back, I do have staff updates. The Board of County Commissioners today had work sessions with staff on two components of the long-term agriculture. CPA sixteen, the Community German Agriculture. One of those is on open space and one of the changes to targeted portion of the open space program. And one of those was on the long-term ad designation project that you will all see in due time. I do want to let the Planning Commission know that we are starting a community.
It's very hard to hear, Christine.
Okay, I will talk up. And talk into the mic. We are starting a community meetings roadshow at the end of March. We're doing four community meetings in two weeks. One of those community meetings will be fully virtual, but three of them will be out into the public. You will be seeing information coming out through our standard email and social medias. So please be aware of those and attend if you would like. And the other is we are fully staffed. Community planning now has back away slowly from that. Key point now has a full set of we now have are all staffed up. So Brian Benjamin started with us last week or the week before. They're all put together, but we are now staffed up, which also means that all of the docket items on the work plan have staff assigned to them and are beginning to move. So, yeah, that's the first time we have seen or done that in at least six years.
Very good.
And that concludes updates.
All right. Well, let's talk about the calendar for April fifth, where we'll be discussing the Terry Open Space Application. Does anybody think that they would miss out on the April fifth meeting? Might not see Commissioner Halverson or Commissioner Hanson. All right, anybody else? Well, hopefully, we have seven of us here other than that, but I don't think there's gonna be major decision points being made on the fifth anyways, is there?
Will ask to set a public hearing.
Oh. Okay, so if everybody else can show up, that would be fantastic. If not, please let Paulie know. Our April nineteenth meeting, subject has not been determined yet. Is anybody not planning on being at that one? Commissioner Hanson might not be able to make that one. All right. Well, with that, we still have about eight minutes until our first public hearing, so we're gonna adjourn for eight. We'll be back in eight minutes. Welcome back to the March fifteenth Planning Commission meeting. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on the Code Clarification and Corrections Amendment, which includes Development Code Docket Item A thirteen miscellaneous clerical errors. A twenty-eight clarification on expansion of non-conforming, non-residential uses and structures. And A twenty-nine update signboard posting procedures. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify for those who are in person, please sign in, which doesn't look like there's anybody here. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. You'll be promoted to panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record and staff to review the public comment timer. With that, this public hearing is open. And we will start off today with a staff presentation from Andrew Bond and Amelia Schwartz to provide background information, written comments submitted for the public hearing, and any additional information requested by the Planning Commission in prior work sessions.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Bond here, and I'm joined with Amelia Schwartz with Community Planning. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on the Code Clarification and Correction Amendment, which is comprised of three Development Code Docket items, A thirteen miscellaneous clerical errors, A twenty-eight clarification on expansion of non-conforming, non-residential uses and structures, and A twenty-nine update signboard posting procedures on the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three official Development Code Docket. The proposed amendments include changes to standards for academic schools in the Special Use Chapter, changes to standards for onsite noticing requirements on type-three applications, and correcting various clerical errors. These proposals would affect Thurston County's titles seventeen through twenty-four. The changes will apply to all rural Thurston County and the urban growth areas. The Planning Commission held two work sessions on February first and February fifteenth. And at the February fifteenth meeting, the Planning Commission voted to set a public hearing. Staff provided notice for the public hearing by publishing a legal notice on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the Olympian. The web mailer was sent to interested parties on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and a press release was issued on March third. Thurston County's Community Planning webpage was updated with all available documents being considered for this hearing. As of today, no public comments have been received on this proposal. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our hearing today. There is nobody in the in the boardroom today, so we'll look for somebody online if they'd like to address the Planning Commission. Please raise your hand. And it does not look like we have any comments today. With that, I will close this public hearing. And we will work on a work session and recommendation a little bit afterwards, but we're gonna do public hearing number two first, aren't we? All right. Now, we will hold a public hearing on the Open Space Application for the Clark and Joan Clements property. This again is a hybrid public meeting. Those wishing to testify appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phoned in, phoned, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify for those in person, please sign in. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. You will be promoted to panelists when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose the star six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. With that, I will open the public hearing. And we will start with a staff presentation from Marissa Wiseman to provide background information on the proposal, written comments submitted to the public hearing, and any additional information requested by the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Marissa Wiseman with Community Planning. This evening, we're here to hold a public hearing on the Clements Open Space Tax Program application. The purpose of the Open Space Tax Program is to conserve open space lands, which the Open Space Taxation Act requires of county governments with tax reductions granted if qualifying properties are maintained in a rural undeveloped state. The current application and review is for a property located on Maple Valley Road Southwest, which lies north of Cedar Flats Road Southwest, south of State Highway eight west, and northwest of Delphi Road Southwest in unincorporated Thurston County. The applicants propose to enroll four of their five acres in open space, open space, under the farm and agricultural conservation land category, subtracting one acre for existing structures and appurtenances. The subject property was formerly enrolled in the Assessor's Farm and Agricultural Land Classification along with their son's adjacent thirty-five acres, but is no longer eligible since their son has sold his properties. However, the property is eligible for enrollment in open space, open space. The applicants to propose to continue livestock grazing, as they've done historically, and to maintain pasture for future agricultural use in accordance with the land conservation proposal they submitted with their application materials. In conclusion, the Clements' property meets the criteria for enrollment in the Open Space Farm and Agricultural Conservation Land category for three points and a fifty percent reduction based on the following factors, which are included in R C W eighty-four thirty-four and in the Thurston County Open Space Tax Program guidelines. The land was previously classified as farm and agricultural land under the Assessor's Program, but no longer meets the criteria for continued classification. And the Clements have since reapplied for reclassification as farm and agricultural conservation land after receiving a notice of removal by the county assessor. The landscape of the property remains open and suitable for continued grazing. And supporting documents, including a land conservation plan, showing measures that will be taken to maintain and protect the property for future commercial agricultural use, were submitted with the application materials. The Planning Commission held a work session on February, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three on the current Open Space Application. And at the end of this work session, the Planning Commission agreed to set this public hearing. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Olympian on February seventeenth. In addition, a webmail announcement was sent to the Community Planning Division's email list serve on February seventeenth. And a press release was issued on March third, as well as notification letters sent to all neighbors within five hundred feet of the subject parcel. Thurston County Community Planning updated the website with all available documents which are being considered at this hearing. As of today, we've received one public comment on this proposal, which was in favor of approving enrollment to the Clements' property in open space. Commissioners, following any public comment or testimony, I am asking that the Planning Commission move to recommend approval of the application from Clark and Joan Clements to be accepted into the Open Space Tax Program for the classification of four acres as current use assessment. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Well, we we will now move on to public testimony. There's nobody in the boardroom. Do we have anybody online that would like to address the Planning Commission on this open space tax credit application?
Kristi.
It looks like we have. one person that would like to testify in this public hearing. I can't read who it is.
It's Kristi.
Oh.
She's coming. There we go.
Ms. White, you're you're up.
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, there's a delay for me to come on to the audio with the new system. I apologize. I would just want to support the application of this as a resident of the Delphi Valley. I think anything that we can do to continue to protect the rural character, of which this certainly would, keeping it open space is a really good thing. So I'm glad to hear that the residents are wanting to do this and support it greatly. That's all I had to comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to testify?
I'm not seeing anybody.
All right, seeing no more hands. This hearing is now closed. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a work session for our first public hearing, which is on procedural and clerical code updates. And that will be with Andrew Bond and Amelia Schwartz again. Go ahead.
So we are available for any questions if the Planning Commission doesn't.
Flight Commission have any questions for staff today? Seeing no questions, would anybody care to make a motion?
I'll move to recommend approval of the Code Clarification and Corrections Amendment, which includes Development Code Docket Item A 13 Miscellaneous Clerical Areas, A 28 Clarification on Expansion of Nonconforming Nonresidential Uses and Structures, and A 29 Update Signboard Posting Procedures and Amendments titled 1724 of the Thurston County Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the Code Clarification and Corrections Amendment, which includes Development Code Docket Item A 13 Miscellaneous Clerical Errors, A 28 Clarification on Expansion of Nonconforming Nonresidential Uses and Structures, and A 29 Update Signboard Posting Procedures and Amendments Title 17 through 24 of the Thurston County Code. With that, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Helverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Aye.
And Commissioner Casino.
Aye, that motion passes unanimously, eight zero. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the work session for the Open Space Application. And for that, we have Marissa Wiseman again.
Commissioners, I'm here. I have thirty questions you may know.
Anybody have any questions for staff concerning this application? With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the application from C and J Clements to be approved into the Open Space Tax Program for the classification of 4.0 acres as current use amendment for parcel 13823120001 located at 1421 Maple Valley Road Southwest.
There are second. It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the application from CNJ Clements to be accepted into the Open Space Tax Program for the classification of four acres as current use assessment for parcel 13823120001 located at 1421 Maple Valley Road Southwest. With that, I'd call for the vote.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Right.
Commissioner Helverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye, that motion passes eight to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number nine on our agenda, work session on Thurston 2045 with Planning Manager Chris Chapeau.
I'm gonna pull up a presentation. I'm gonna take just one moment. Right. Thank you. Interesting. I'm Christina Chapeau, Community Planning Manager, for the record, and we are going to discuss Thurston 2045. This is the comprehensive plan update. Unfortunately, my people is not here with us today. She was unable to make it. So today's work session is just to go over the scope of work for didn't give a mic to her last time. Now it's working too well. Go over the scope of work for the periodic update, periodic update is Thurston 2045. And we are just at the beginning. We're gonna go over the next steps, as well as asking the Planning Commission which optional updates are the highest priority to include in the periodic plan update to bring forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Tonight, I'm gonna go over some of the scope of work and the goals. The periodic update.
Christina, I can barely hear you again.
Okay, I'm gonna try keeping the mic closer to me, but I seem to be getting some feedback. Commissioner Pestinger, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's better, okay.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, the periodic update is a required periodic update. We do this every 10 years. It's to go over the comprehensive plan and the development regulations to bring both of those items into compliance with state law. The most recent periodic update was completed in 2019 with a few follow-on items completed in 2020. The 2019 update was actually due in 2016, but we did finish it a little late, and that's why there's we're so close to the last time we completed a periodic update before starting this next one, but we are back on track. So our next update is due June 30th of 2025. This is the bigger update of our comprehensive plan. It brings the plan into compliance, as I said before, with state law. It updates some use numbers, population, and building projections, as well as looks at how the county wants to grow over the next 20 years. This is not a full repeal and replace. It is not a full revisioning of the comprehensive plan because we have recently updated the comp plan. But it will be bringing a number of items up to date with state law, as well as doing some significant states to other areas within the code. Most of the chapters in our comprehensive plan align elements that are required under state law. Some of the elements in state law are spread across multiple chapters. An example of this is the rural element. This particular element is addressed in both the land use and the natural resources chapters. So you may not see all of the elements laid out specifically as chapters in our comprehensive plan, but our comprehensive plan does is in compliance with state law. And all of those elements are addressed within the comprehensive plan. So the scope of work, we have required items, and there are some optional updates. The draft scope of work was developed based on several pieces. The Commerce Checklist is one of them. It serves us as a guide. We are required to meet the items on the checklist as part of the update. We fill out this particular checklist to identify what tasks we need to complete. These are automatically included in the scope of work. There may be instances where we don't know the answer yet, and it requires further investigation. We may make additional reports, and all of that will get completed or truly underway with the comprehensive plan update. We'll continue to refer back to this checklist as updating the comprehensive plan. There are priorities in the community that we're also taking into consideration, primarily used for obtained through a public survey, but also through written comments submitted directly to staff and the commissioners. We receive information about anticipated changes to state law. So some of these optional elements are changes we expect in the upcoming legislature session. One of those elements, for example, is the climate change element. And then the changing local trends in Thurston County. Some of these are based on, some of the optional elements are based on local trends, like future land use, health element, and the economic element. That's a good question. We've received significant written public comments, eighty-four public comments submitted to staff, plus an additional council that I'll see prior to tonight. Most of these are reference specific changes I'd like to see in the plan. Example, transportation or climate change or agriculture. We will take those into consideration with the scope of work, and once the plan is once we're in the midst of doing the plan update, most of those that I just mentioned do fall under the required elements, and the required elements will be opened and updated. So there were a few other things that we saw with improving goals.
Sorry, it's getting hard to hear you again.
Okay. Improving goals around farmland preservation, updating plan to meet housing needs, environment justice priorities, as well as including measurable metrics, and updating the countywide planning policies. Some of these elements are going to be completed automatically. Farmland preservation calls under the natural resources element. So all the goals, policies within that particular chapter will be reviewed. That housing needs and racial disparities fall under the new housing element that is required piece. We will be updating those. Environmental justice is something we can review as part of the housing element update as part of the social equity. And the community engagement and outreach to underrepresented groups, and we've already started to make ensure that we are our community and public outreach includes those areas where we may have missed some of the underrepresented underrepresented groups in the past. So all of those items will be updated. I'm gonna go a little bit of the Thurston 2045 survey. Now I really need my notes for this one, because this was mostly mine. So the survey did think the recap is included in the packet. There were eighteen questions included, multiple choice, short answers, and ranking. The questions were based on major elements, trends, recent comments we've heard in the community. The survey was intended as time capture of information. It's not meant to be the only thing that feeds into the decision-making process or the scope of work, but it was our starting point. It's also not by any means intended to be the only. I don't know why this is giving me so much trouble. I am very sorry, guys. Yeah. Think I'm gonna just move.
Is someone speaking?
Commissioner Pestinger, can you hear Manager Chapeau?
Not not at all. And I wouldn't keep bringing this up, but I think we claim our audible recording is our public record, so that means no one can hear us.
Yep.
Ten million dollars. I'll try it from here. Let's see if this works. Can those online hear me?
Yeah, perfect.
Awesome, okay.
Mark on the floor.
So as I was saying, the Thurston 2045 survey report, you did receive the information and the recap in your packet. There was some ranking that we did do for some individual items. You can see those up on the screen here. We did ask individuals to pick their top three from a list, and that list was generated based on a whole bunch of items that we have heard in the past. Four topics were selected as the most. And they are listed here. Three topics that were at the bottom were bicycle, pedestrian facilities, more recreation, and an increase of land or industrial commercial development. This doesn't mean that people don't think that they are important. It just means that they didn't rise to the top for this particular survey. So every topic, at least someone thought, was very important, so we wanted to make sure that we were inclusive of that particular information. We did allow for free responses from people to get a list of what they were thinking, instead of forcing them to stay within the confines of how we were thinking about it. And what we heard a lot was opposition to the new airport, which is not on the list of our to-dos. Addressing homelessness, which is partly part of our housing, but is also part of the Regional Housing Association or authorities' work. So a portion of that will be addressed as part of the comprehensive plan update. Crime and safety, which is outside of our valley way. Healthcare, childcare, small and local businesses, and then streamlining the permitting process and reducing costs. So those were the top themes that we heard from those that wrote in their answers. So the required updates, we automatically do these. We revens back to our Commerce Checklist as we go through to make sure that we are capturing everything and completing everything that is in state law. We also refresh all the data and background information and review the goals and policies related to all of these. And these are intended to be broad in general. An example is the natural resources element includes ag, forest, and mineral lands. All three of these had or are having a pretty robust update with the had one with the last comp plan, or we're already in the midst of doing a robust update. But we will still go through all the background information, the goals, the policies, and make changes there as needed. So the optional updates, I think this is where everybody wants to talk about. These what we're asking for tonight is feedback on and recommend- What we're asking for tonight is feedback on um and recommendation on these. We did ask. We did provide you a sheet so you could rank them if you chose. Um, that is not the only method. That the planning commission can choose to provide the recommendation in. Um, it was the method that we've seen the board of county commissioners complete. But when we're finished with this, we can have that conversation. So based on the community's priorities, comments, anticipated changes in state law and local trends, we developed this optional updates list. Uh, we went through. Let's see. So we're gonna go through. This list here. She does not have, nope. So I'm just gonna stand here and talk at you. There we go. So the first one is the implementation plan. Uh, this would develop metrics to help us track how we are meeting our goals and policies. Uh, we do need to do a five-year report after the update, so having this information laid out would be helpful. For staff to measure and track our comprehensive plan implementation. Future lane use update um based on local trends and streamline and a request to streamline our permitting process and reduce our fees. This would create a true future land use map that is visionary for the county, meaning that we would have broad, general buckets for each land use category. With multiple types of zoning that could fit into those buckets. The result. Is that not every rezone request would need to go through a legislative review. Docketing, planning commission, board of county commissioners. Some could go through a hearing examiner, which would be quicker and cheaper process for our citizens. This update would pair well with the countywide industrial land study. Next one is the incorporating the countywide industrial land study findings. This would incorporate findings from the. Industrial land study into our comp plan. Um, the study has been a high priority of the community. It's going on there. Um, and we respect the results um from that study later this year and they could be used um to look at zoning um and code changes. As a result. Climate change element. We have some information from in our comp plan currently, uh but this would incorporate information from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And regional climate efforts. Um, the, there is model guidance from the state. Uh, and we would structure, uh we would start our structure with the, that particular update. I'm not sure why my computer is. Moving on. Currently, I'm having too slow for it. The economic element. We did do a um update to our economic element in twenty nineteen. The Economic Development Council did complete this for us. Um, we would be just reviewing this time around the chapter, determine if there are any changes that are needed based on changing trends. Um, we're not sure, uh, we're unsure how much new information there really is since this was updated in twenty nineteen. The health element is somewhat similar. We did do an update to the health chapter, um which was completed in twenty twenty. For reference, at that point, it hadn't been updated since twenty thirteen. So it was a pretty robust um update that we did in twenty twenty. If it were part of our scope of work, we would review the chapter and determine if any changes are needed. Based on changing trends. Uh, but again, we're unsure about how much new information is out there since we have recently done this update. So our short-term timeline, we've briefed the board of county commissioners to introduce the scope of work. Um, tonight, we're having um this review with the planning commission um and hoping for a recommendation on the scope of work. April twelfth, we'll be going back to the board of county commissioners with the planning commission recommendation on the scope of work and asking for direction. Um, on which op- optional updates to include. In May, we will um then move um a resolution to the board of county commissioners for their adoption. Um, of the scope of work for the twenty four forty-five work. And by that will set us up for um. Putting together our paperwork for the grant funding that should be coming out July one of this year. The overall project timeline, we're currently in our scoping phase, phase one here. We'll move to phase two, which is initial outreach um and internal review. Uh, and then planning commission in March of uh twenty twenty-four. And uh the board of county commissioners will start, who would hope to start their um briefings in September of twenty twenty-four. With an ultimate goal of having an adopted comprehensive plan by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So again, the recommendation, um, we are requesting a recommendation. In the scope of work for the Thurston twenty forty-five, there are uh six elements. Uh, you can rank them. One through six or from highest to lowest priority um for this periodic update or in another fashion as the planning commission may see fit. And that's the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna um start with. Asking some questions of staff then, and I think we'll start down here with Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, I mean, I just had um on slide six, the, the scoping slide. I mean, I've, I guess I've been kind of confused about what scoping means. Um. And uh, you know, so I've looked at other uh jurisdictions, other counties. And I've seen scoping as kind of essentially being defined as all of everything that goes up to the review period because you're constantly refining your scope. Um. And I also looked at our, you know, Thurston County. Um. The only scope of work document that I was able to find, just with my amateur skills, was the twenty seventeen. Scope of work for the comp plan update. So the last, the last go-round. And it's an, it's an actual document. It's, I don't know how many pages, but it's, it's a, it's a document. And I'm wondering. Are we working off of that document? And if not, what was drafted for the twenty, the twenty forty-five project? Um, and can we see it or can it be posted? Online or if, if we're really working off of this one, can it be updated? Because, you know, the reason I ask is it helps, you know, it helps me. For one thing, as a planning commissioner, but I also think it would provide a lot of clarity to um. To the public as they're being asked to make comment if there's some document that they can refer to that, that is the scope of work. So. So when you say that something was, was drafted, what, what are you referring to?
So as part of your package and part of the package that the board received, um you would have received as part of your attachments. A document that says Thurston twenty forty-five comprehensive periodic update scope of work. It's attachment A.
Okay.
I step away.
Right. Do you have some in the documents that we rejected today?
No, it, it would have been. Because I looked at it. I thought I looked. So it is, okay, so it is the, so it is updated. Oh, yay. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted. That's the short answer to the long question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wheatley, do you have anything else?
Not, not now. I mean, I'm right. Yeah, I just had, I was just really wondering where that was, so.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna look up and down the dais here and see if anybody else has any questions. Um.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
These, but I don't know whether it's right time to ask. On the uh. The optional. Sheet.
Uh, let's get to Commissioner Passinger and then we'll move into this worksheet. Commissioner Passinger?
Thank you, Chair. I have about five questions. Should I just run through them?
Please do.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Christina. Uh, question, my first question has to do with the um. The survey itself. Um, I noticed on the page in the addendum where it details the different zip codes and their participation. That it was pretty heavily loaded with uh respondents from zip code nine eight five one three, which is the area where the airport was being considered. Um, and so is there any concern that your survey responses with nine hundred and fifty responses was overwhelmingly. Heavily loaded by people who are just really wound, wound up about the airport issues? And did that throw off any of the survey results?
So it, yes, it did concern us when we saw that. We were able to um. Comb through those responses by IP address um and noticed that there was. One IP address that made um the same response over forty times. So we did ask that, right? So we did um do some um. We did pull out a number of those particular responses as part of our overall um number. Uh, to make sure that we were not. Waiting of one particular item because one particular household um provided that comment so many times. Um, we did ask for everybody in a household to make a comment, so we did allow up to four comments per IP address. Uh, but if we were seeing more than that, um, we, we did make sure that um there was a um counterbalance to that kind of response.
Cool. Thank you. Um, next question had to do with the survey timing. Um, it was mentioned that A, the public outreach timeframe is from March of twenty twenty-three through March of twenty twenty-four. And it was mentioned that the survey is kind of the starting point of all of that. Um, can you talk about how that works um in terms of where does that public outreach go from here? Um, is it just simply public comment from the next year? Or are there other expected and other than maybe some open houses? Um, is, and a work in a, and a finally a uh public hearing? Are there other means of direct communication or survey or similar type of things that are expected in the public engagement portion over the next year?
Absolutely. So we are um anticipating um that we will be doing a number of um. Communication plans for um either groups of um items to update or groups of chapters to update or individual chapters to update. For example, the housing chapter is going to be a big one. Um, and that particular one's gonna need its own communications plan. That communications plan is going to include not only our standard stuff, fact sheets, websites, um standard comment periods, but we're gonna be um. Putting together stakeholder groups for that particular chapter. We may be asking the planning commission to, to create a sub um committee for certain chapters. Uh, housing, climate change, that sort of thing. Uh, so no, it's not our, the standard um public participation that you've seen. Um, in the past with our annual updates. This is gonna be much more robust as far as our public participation part. More time, public participation, planning and outreach. Um, we also have started to um. Reach out to some of the uh more underrepresented um groups and just uh start to engage with them um and. Let them know that we're beginning this process and helping them to understand what it, what this process is or what this update is. Um, and um asking them where, where should we connect? How should we connect with them so that we can start plugging in that sort of thing?
Wonderful. So it sounds like, um, and that's a great clarification. Thank you. It sounds like it's focused on a chapter by chapter basis um going forward.
For the most part, yeah, some chapters may be, if they're smaller updates, um to the overall chapters, maybe grouped together.
Would, would you?
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Commissioner. Sorry. Are you thinking that in the stakeholder groups on some of these uh um were drilled down issues that. There, you need a subcommittee before you can have a planning commissioner represented on it, or do we have to? Take that step on everything?
Right. So we may not, we may not have to do the uh subcommittee from planning commission for everyone. We may put together a, a stakeholder group to go through. Uh, the large portions and bring it down and then ask the planning commission to do um for a subcommittee that whittles it down even further. Um, as far as the options are concerned, that, that some committee can bring that back to the planning commission.
I, I guess where I'm getting at is um, there's probably some issues that somebody on the planning commission, it, it's kind of their niche.
Yep.
And it's, doesn't rise to the level of having a whole subcommittee, but would like access to these stakeholder groups and information. And if that comes along. Uh, will we be able to send somebody from the planning commission to a stakeholder group?
Correct, yes.
I'm so, sorry, Commissioner Passinger. Go ahead with your next question.
Oh, that's great clarification. Thank you, Chair. Um, so in that same vein of what you just mentioned, Christina, about the uh. Reaching out to other groups that are usually less um participatory in these things. I saw in the main uh plan that description of, you know, renters and. BIPOC and disabled and other groups that are usually less represented in these public communications. Um, and it said, you know, in the addendum, there'd be more detail about the plan. But when I went to the addendum on that section, I think it's addendum D, uh, I still only found just a repeat of that, you know, desired goal. I didn't see any specific details about. How uh the staff was gonna be reaching out to the public in those areas where we don't usually reach those people. Um, you mentioned you're trying to figure some of that out right now. Is there any more you can share about that?
That is what I can share with you at this time. Um, it is a work in progress um as we move forward with um a relatively. Revamped communication planning um for this kind of, kind of project.
Boom. I mean, I'm just really curious how we're gonna do it. I'd love, I love that we're, we're setting as a goal and attempting to do it. I think it's. The devil will be in the details, whether we actually accomplish it by reaching the right folks. So. Um, I, I hope we can have a chance to maybe provide input on some best methods to accomplish that.
Absolutely. We are here to receive that kind of information. I will um say that for example, what we're doing um. In the immediate future is um CLO is one of the um Spanish-speaking um groups that help to um. Engage that particular, the Hispanic community. We have reached out to them um and are joining. Some of their outreach events just to be there and to be part of their um community. Um, as well as um starting some listening sessions with them just to hear from them their perspectives on these particular issues.
Uh, I'm actually on the board of CLO. Uh, just as a side note on CLO, it's not um, it, it. It is the largest nonprofit organization that serves the Latino community in Thurston County. Um, however, they do not have a database or even a contact list. Of a huge amount of the population because of the types of services they provide, which is primarily crime victim advocacy. Um, they don't, so the method you're using by attending their events is actually the best way to reach some of the public, but. Actually, the group Hispanic Roundtable has a far larger contact base with the Latino community and would be better able to probably assist.
Perfect. Can you give me that information? We can make sure that we.
Sure.
Contact them.
Okay. Um, next question. You mentioned that you're trying to consider some uh potential. You know, upcoming legislative changes that might be happening and obviously you can't anticipate everything. But one bill that has gotten a huge amount of attention related to the world of planning is House Bill eleven ten. Are you familiar?
Um, I know it's on my list of items that I look at weekly, but I, what's the title of it?
I'm not sure, but the gist of it has to do with density of housing and has to do with basically requiring any city in the state of Washington with over six thousand population. To automatically allow a density up to four plexes or more on a single lot without any zoning changes.
Yeah, so I could look into that a little bit further, but I do believe that particular bill um as it's currently written is city-centric, so city only. They. There was some information um or some requirements for. They, there was some information um or some requirements for counties, but they have uh pulled that out. Um, I believe that's the same bill, but I can, I can look into that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I just wonder whether, how the staff feels a bill like that might impact the comprehensive plan for, for example.
Yeah, since it's city centric, um, it would um affect our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Um, and then the last question then would be about the um weighting uh and the prioritization. Um, you mentioned these optional things and that we could score on one to six or something like that. Um, I personally would prefer uh the, I don't know, awaited or a different methodology. Or maybe we can just share with you our views. Um, but for example, out of those things, um, I would only vote for any attention to be spent on environmental related issues and preservation issues um or uh housing related. Um, I would give zero energy or attention to some of those other things like uh industrial uh facilities planning and whatnot. And even as much as I love bicycle paths, um, those first two things are just worldwide emergencies. And uh, I can't see spending any time on anything else when we only have such, such dramatic emergencies in front of us. But that's my comments and questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Passinger. Uh, does anybody else have any comments on process before we move to um Commissioner Carmen, starting the discussion on prioritization?
Yeah, I wanna go back to, cause there's been some talk about the survey that was sent out. And I just wanna point out that that was a very, very basic, uninformative survey. Cause it just asked a series of questions about these different priorities. It gave no weight to your understanding of the current county's current policies and what you wanted. Cause it doesn't, you know, like we heard today about the, something going on at the port with somebody using water. But that's in Tumwater. That has nothing to do with us. We can't. And I will point out to those that were here and to those that aren't. Um, Thurston County has a pretty definite plan to let the cities do what they want and tell us as planning commissioners, if you wanna do something else, that's too bad. We saw it in Tumwater. And now, and then we saw, I believe we saw a lot of issues in the Olympia deal, um, the Olympia joint plan. So I just think, is it, I mean, is the way it should have been, I think, is you ask the question about the environment and then you ask, where is the county in that? Because what if I say, oh, the environment's the most important thing? And then, but I think that Thurston County has fifty-foot buffers on rivers. Obviously, I don't know. Maybe I think that they're doing, the county's doing plenty, and I think there's five hundred foot buffers. Again, that's, I think there's an information lack there. And so I, I don't trust the survey because it's just a basic question of here, and the county laid these things out, you know, the, all those options that you see there. The county laid out. It's not like they said, it's not like there was just a question, what do, what do you put your importance on? It was, here's your, it was basically, here's your options. And so I think that's important to look at going forward.
Good. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment on that. Um, I, well, uh, I mean, first of all, I agree that in terms of the numerical aspect of the survey, uh, I don't, I don't plan to give any uh credence to the numerical aspect. I read the comments. I actually read all the comments twice, or you know, some of them were more complex. Um, and even the ones that were just really short showed that people were putting, you know, people who bothered to comment uh, put thought into the comment, even if it was just one or two sentences. And even if it's just, you know, like a, you know, do more about crime or something like that. So I was really, I found the qualitative, that I could learn something from the qualitative aspects of it. But um, in terms of the quantitative, in a social science kind of perspective, it, it doesn't really count for much, and I agree there. But in terms of your other comment about whether the public is having an opportunity to respond to what the county's actually doing, basically, one thing that I saw, um, I'm trying to remember if it was Kitsap County. I can't remember what county it was, but I really liked the way, this would be part of the public participation plan. Um, you know, I really think the website needs a lot of attention because people do everything, expect to do everything through the website. And the website needs to be really, really well designed for this process to be as good as it can be. And I liked, well, a lot of the jurisdiction, a lot of the counties um do provide a kind of a, you know, you go to the landing page and you're interested in housing or whatever it might be. And you'll click on that and it'll take you through to a succinct kind of summary of what the county is thinking about that, or you know, how that fits into the comprehensive plan. Um, and then uh, then there's an opportunity within that chapter or element, or however it's organized, to write a con, like a qualitative comment. And also quite often, that's an opportunity if there's something clarifying that the county's looking for as it's doing the, the, you know, drafting. There were poll, like little mini polls, you know, so that somebody who's there, obviously because they're interested in that issue, would then just answer these, this one or two mini polls about something that, you know, would be really helpful. And I thought that was a really good design idea. Um, because it lets people go to what, what it is about this plan that they care about. You know, learn the framework, like you were talking about, you know, what is the actual framework that's relevant to the county? Um, and then, and then respond accordingly. And, and it was, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's a simple design. I mean, I think a lot of work goes into, into it upfront. But the end result is really simple to use and it also addresses another concern that I have. Um, even in just, okay, we've just started, right? And we've already had, how, how many comments? Was it eighty-four public comments or whatever? Or now it's eighty-six or the archiving of these comments. Um, it would be great if it were searchable, if it were organized by element or whatever it might be with dates so that we know kind of where and time that came. Um, but, but I think the archiving of that is gonna be really important. And especially if we're starting, starting to think about um outreach to a broader public and how that might come in. Um, you know, it'd be helpful to know, well, these con, you know, sort of have everything clustered so that if there was an outreach event that was about um housing affordability or, I mean, I don't know, whatever, whatever topic it is. Um, that we can see those comments clustered around it, that these came from that event, et cetera. I mean, just like sort of, so a kind of somewhat more complex way of archiving the public comments than just the kind of the lists or, you know, a date and a list or an event and a list. I think that would be so helpful.
Commissioner Wheatley, do you think that if that public comment matrix that staff normally puts together listed the chapter that that comment was associated with, so then it was a searchable function for you? Would that be something that, is that what you're kind of hoping for?
I'm sort of thinking the searchability is cool because then if there may, I mean, a lot of people comment on more than one thing, right? And so if it's sort of searchable, you know, they might have three different things that they want, they're commenting on. Um, and you can sort of land on that.
I guess I'm just wondering if like on that, that matrix, we can't have five hundred fields. But maybe adding one, one or two more fields, one of them being like, what's chapter? I, I don't know how you put together your public comment matrix, but
We can look into how to um accommodate these um in, in their good requests. I mean, how do we group them by event? Um, how do we make sure that the comment is linked to a topic? So it makes sense for those that are reading them, who are making decisions on policy and those in the um, in the, in the county who are just reading them to see what um, others are talking about. Um, we can, we do some more research around um how to put all of that together. Um, it will be based on the resources that we do have. Um, so, and we do have some limitations with the new website. So, um, but it's something we can definitely look into um and do a more robust um breakout of that kind of information.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have something?
No, not right now.
Commissioner Passinger, do you have more on process?
No, thanks.
I, I did have another.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so I appreciated um Comis, Commissioner Passenger's questions about the public participation. I am wondering, um, you know, clearly, uh, you're taking the, the basic public participation plan that was presented to us back in, I don't remember if it was eight, uh, November or, I don't know, it was a while ago. Back then, yeah, sort of as a launching point. Um, is there, might there be an opportunity uh, as this process moves forward for us to, as a planning commission, to weigh in or, or monitor the specifics of that? Because at the, you know, when we went to our last training, the training last time, I mean, one of the things that we're specifically responsible for as a planning commission is the public participation plan for this comp plan update. I mean, that's kind of like in the list of things that planning commissioners exist or planning commissions exist to do. So what, what going forward would be the way that we um, provide feedback or hear what's going on with the public participation planning?
We can look into that a little bit more. Um, typically, um, we do start with um creating um communication plans for ourselves internally. Um, what, who are all the stakeholders? Um, where do we think we need meetings? Um, who do we think we need to make sure is included? How robust of um participation plan does this particular piece need? Um, because not all um updates or not all chapters are gonna need the same type of um robustness that some other uh update or chapter updates are gonna need. Um, if you have um suggestions about how to structure those and even if it's just for specific um elements within the update. Um, like I said, we're here to receive that information. Please provide that to myself or to Maya either tonight or in email. Um, and we can look into um what that looks like. What we don't wanna do is um slow down our process. Uh, cause even though it's twenty twenty-five seems so far away, it's not as far away as we all think. Um, so maybe there are more check-in points um with where we're at with each of the different pieces or the update overall with the planning commission. Um, and maybe that is something that a subcommittee can, uh, planning commission can set up a subcommittee to take a look at or to review. So um, we don't have to bring it back to a full planning commission meeting.
Was that something that we could discuss? I mean, it seems like
Setting up a public participation subcommittee?
Yeah, or, or something like, you know, some way to make sure that there's some kind of periodic update and that the pu, that the planning commission has a fairly good handle on, on what, what the, what's, what's happening because that's one of our jobs.
So process.
Right.
Go ahead.
A general comment, one of my concerns is, is the schedule. And when I look at what you put up on the board, the public communications part is big. I've been through this process once. Scott's been through it two or three times. Um, and I know how it drags. Uh, now it's totally different staff this time, so I, I know it's gonna be better. But I think that um, that's, we're gonna have to take some special time to speed that up or we're not gonna make June twenty twenty-five. I, I mean, I, based on my experience in doing it before, I mean, we had to have the director come in and push us to finally fin, finish it last time. Um, and so I, 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 you know, your suggestion of putting some emphasis on that, maybe we help. I don't know whether we'd get in the way or whether we'd be helpful. But somehow we've gotta shrink that March to March timeframe.
Right. So um, one thing to keep in mind when we're showing that public participation plan, March to March, um, is that we are, under state law, required to do early and often, public participation um, for all of this. And it doesn't mean that we're constantly doing public participation and that's only what we're doing. Um, when we're, um, when you see that, we're also doing the background work and the development of um all the bits and bobs for the um, for the update itself. Uh, cause the stakeholders or the community are providing their input so that we can refine all of those pieces. Um, but yes, we do need to make sure that we're moving um the process along. So I would um ask the planning commission to let us get to a point where we have a scope of work that the Board of County Commissioners has approved. And we can take a look at what are all of those elements and um identify um how we're gonna create that communications plan for the overall project. Um, and that's maybe something we bring back to the planning commission as either a staff update or just an update. Not necessarily a work session, but just um an agenda item to update you all where we're at, what's going on. And then we can take any comments on it.
So you'd like to, you'd like to have the scope finished and then the public participation plan?
A deeper dive.
Planning commission be assigned to it then?
Correct.
Um, okay. What is the formal process for for um creating a subcommittee and then, and then appointing people to it?
Yeah, that's the other reason that I'll need to take a look at um the sub, are the planning commission's rules and procedures for how that gets.
I mean, I, I read that part, but it seemed like there's a lot of ambiguity there. It's just something that we say this is done and this is how, and then um, I am gonna go out on a limb here and, and guess that you would really like to be on that subcommittee.
Well, I don't know.
I would like you to be on, I would like you to be on.
If that's the way that we decide we're gonna go, but it may be that we just need to do the odd work session here and there. I mean, I, I'm not sure that I necessarily embrace the idea that it would take a
Well, everybody think about if they want to be on that subcommittee or not. And then at our April fifth meeting, maybe you could tell us a little bit more about the formation of a subcommittee and maybe who we would appoint to it. And then hopefully by your April twelfth meeting with the board, you'll have a scope kind of figured out a little more. And then maybe April nineteenth, we could formally um create the subcommittee and appoint members to it. Does that seem half reasonable?
Certain work considering. I can bring back the information and the planning commission can think about if they want to do a subcommittee or not. Um, but at minimum, um, we'll bring back um subcommittees. How do they work?
Okay, and the more that we can front load our March to March for the twenty-three, the quicker we will get through things if we get more done upfront. Does anybody else have anything on, on process before we get into the specific elements of the comp plan?
I can add a little to what you just discussed.
Okay.
From my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, um, you as the chair, um, and you know, we don't have standing subcommittees. Um, this would be an ad hoc subcommittee and you as chair at any point could take a motion for us to create a subcommittee. Or you could decide to create one yourself. And the chair usually has the authority to appoint the chair of the subcommittee. And then anyone is free to join it if they want. Um, it's up to that chair to determine who ultimately ends up on that committee with them.
Uh, that was my understanding as well. I didn't know if there was going to be anything else to it because it would require some staff involvement. And as a general rule, I don't like to tell staff what to do and I don't even think I have the authority to tell staff what to do. Figuring out um, uh, what they need on their, like, there might even be a document involved. Figuring out um uh what they need on their, like, there might even be a document involved. I have no idea.
Maybe several.
Maybe several documents, yes.
Increased budgeting.
Right, uh, then we'll move on to, we'll start the discussion on the optional elements portion of this, and we're gonna start with Commissioner Carmen.
Well, in in looking at these and listening to your explanation, I I would like to have those explanations in writing, but I see elements of each one of these items that can be very important to the overall uh comp plan. Um, you know, like, the economic element seems kind of, you know, to those people who are very, uh, that the environment is so much, is is so important to, might think that that's not important, but I look at economic element is what what is the cost of the overall plan and the elements of the plan? Um, because we, there is nothing that is perfect. There, we can't, we will not have a perfect comp plan. It will cost taxpayers money. It will cost the environment something because there's nothing that's perfect. Um, so I I I look at each one of these items and think that they're they're all have elements that are important to the overall plan. Um, it's just hard to decide which parts of each one of those, and then then ranking them is is not easy.
Well, do we want to um? I'm I'm sure that these six elements here are not the end of everything that we would like to talk about to be included in the comp plan, but as at least a very good starting point, do we wanna do a little straw pulling on where people feel about each of these? Each of these elements?
I have a thought about difference between, because prioritization, I mean, it could be useful, but it essentially it's like, starting at the fallback plan, like, assuming that some of these are gonna get cut, which ones do we want to recommend? Essentially, what the prioritization does. I think we should take a threshold approach to this and make a recommendation to Board of County Commissioners based on what we think really should be included um as as one of these optional elements. So, for example, we would say, should we have, like, thumbs up, thumbs down? Should we be developing an implementation plan during this comp plan update? And I think we should either say it should go in or it should not go in, not is it?
One, two, three, or four.
One, two, three, four, five.
That's that's not unfair at all.
And I think I would.
Like that.
I would, that would leave it, I think, probably any of the kind of prioritization or, like, thinking about the trade-offs. Um, that would probably leave it up to basically the staff and the board to kind of figure out, but I think um a strong recommendation coming from us as to what we think should be in there so that the board and the staff can talk about what resources are necessary. I think that's how I would approach this. If there's something we think we can drop as a group, let's not send it forward, but if we think everything in here really should be included, that should be our recommendation.
I think if we, kind of along those same lines, if we just took a that threshold vote on every one of them and forward all those votes to the B O C C, they could see, well, this one was seven to two, and this one was one to eight, and then they could, that would be our recommendation to them.
That's.
Is that fair?
No, I think that's more meaningful information for the board.
I think it probably is too. Does does anybody have heartburn over that issue?
I I don't know if it's that issue, but of course, as I've said many times in here, I have an issue with scoping in general because this is supposed to be a comprehensive review of our comprehensive plan. And I'll point out once again, in two thousand four, Thurston County got sued for not opening up the entire comp plan to review. And Thurston County lost that appeal at the Growth Management Hearing Board. So, I mean, that's that's where my heartburn lies in all of this is this is going to go out and the, you know, and then maybe it gets to public involvement, and the questions only go out to the public about these issues that we say are important. What about the other issues, you know? And I'll say Doug brought up the stuff, the twenty nineteen review was not comprehensive. I was flat out told by staff that there were things that I could not bring up because it was not part of the scope of the plan. And I made that mistake in twenty nineteen, and I think it's pretty obvious to everyone here. I will not be making that mistake in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five.
But I think there are two points, uh, like, scope is both breadth and depth here, and I, like, I feel like we've also been presented with the determination that the depth will be this deep in some of these, and I don't know that that makes sense to me. I think we could find that even though we've had a recent update, there could be one of these elements that we actually even really wanted something bigger with, rather than just the threshold of regulatory compliance. Because this is a process that, one, it's comprehensive, and it is supposed to be setting a really long-term vision. And the twenty nineteen sounds like it was basically to, let's just push this thing over that regulatory threshold line and get it good enough. And this shouldn't be just look back at the good enough document. You should take that just bare minimum document and make it something the community want.
Uh, Chris, if, so you're gonna be bringing back stuff to the board on the twelfth, and I I doubt they're gonna have a final decision for you on that. But once the board sets the scoping, is that a done deal? And there's nothing outside of the scope that can be discussed?
That is typically how it works, yes.
So.
I I don't understand the disconnect between optional and required. If these are optional, then they're not required.
Correct.
I I guess I'm a little concerned that our scoping would be shut off as early as April twenty twenty-three for a document that is not gonna be finalized until the middle of twenty twenty-five. There's a lot of stuff that we don't know that we are expected to know by two weeks from now or one month from now to set our conversations for the next year and a half.
And I think we're doing that in in an environment where we've received very, very, very limited, meaningful feedback from the community.
Scott, does does that kind of fit into what you were saying?
Um, yeah, I think, well, I mean, my thought is part of the reason that I was doing this from the start was because I wanted to be involved in reviewing the comprehensive plan. And so of you, most of you know, I've been doing this since February two thousand six, and I don't feel I've been involved in a comprehensive review or in a review of the comprehensive plan. I believe we do yearly updates, and some of those are great, but I want to open up the book and say what in here is right and what in here is wrong. And I'm afraid the more we start to narrow it down, the more that county commissioners are going to tell us, oh, well, we, yeah, we're not gonna do that.
Of of course, the danger is if we don't have any sideboards, then we're off in the woods forever and we never get anything done. I'm not sure how to strike the balance between those two.
Well, I mean, that's a possibility, but it's not inevitable. And and I, you know, we I I don't think that we should, we should narrow the focus because of, there there is a possibility that we we wouldn't get done in time. I I think that we should um, you know, recognize that as a possibility, but not limit ourselves because of some outcome that that isn't decided yet.
Um, so the the problems that you've seen before where there's things that were not opened up, they are in they're topics that are already discussed in our comp plan, but they were not reviewed in a more timely fashion. They haven't been reviewed thoroughly enough. Is that, is that what I'm understanding, Scott?
Yeah, I would say that's a, that's a fair assessment of a part of the problem.
So, right now, everything that is one of our required elements would be covered by everything that's already in the comp plan. Is that, is that true? Do we have any, our current comp plan, does it have any optional elements in it that are not discussed in our, in our new worksheets?
So, let me try and clarify, um, from my understanding, are you asking um, the chapters that are being proposed as required items, and I'm speaking slowly, find that. So, the comprehensive plan itself will be all of the areas um from our introduction, land use, natural resources, chapter, housing, transportation, capital facilities, utilities, um, environment, recreation, open space, archaeological and historic and archaeological and historic resources, uh, as long, along with um some of the um glossary items, because those are maps. All of those are required elements in the G M A and will be um opened up and will do a full review of those goals and policies. We have a couple of items that are uh not required by the G M A. The economic development chapter is one of them, and the health chapter is another one of them. Um, those do not have to be updated with the periodic update because they are not a requirement of G M A. That's why they're on the optional list.
I guess what I'm getting at is um um Commissioner Nelson has some very specific concerns about things that were not addressed in the last few reviews. And if those areas of can, or if those areas are already going to be scoped that within our scope because of the required elements of what we're doing, and if they're not picked up there, would they be picked up in some of these optional elements? Maybe that would have enough latitude for Commissioner Nelson's concerns to be addressed.
If I understood what those concerns were.
Do you, you had a, well, you had quite a few of them.
I don't know that there's anything specific, but uh I just think that whatever's in the comp plan should be open for our discussion.
And I have a question. This, so when I read the checklist, and I didn't realize that that was an attachment, so this is my first time in reading it on my phone. Um, yeah, not fun, but so where it says no to the question, changes required to meet current statute, we're not expecting to do anything with those sections.
Those. So, what the checklist does is show us what areas we are in compliance with and what areas that we have to to change. If a chapter has to be opened, we are going to review those goals and policies in full. So just because a particular section, we may be in compliance with it with the checklist, we have to fill out that checklist for commerce. So we did it, and we said that we're currently in compliance, yay. But that doesn't mean that if that chapter is being opened, because there are other areas that need to be updated, that the whole thing isn't gonna get reviewed. That make.
That does make sense, but I'm I'm worried because I've heard a couple times, like, that this, the goal of this is not a full revisioning, it's not a repeal and replace, it is a, like, make tweaks to make sure that we're in compliance with the law. And if that's as far as we're being scoped to go, I think that's where we might run into problems. Or let's imagine that there's a section that we aren't opening, and that's where Scott wants to dig in. But that's, I think, the concern that I have is that we'll get down the road and we'll find an issue that we really, really want to do something about, or the community wants to do something about, and the answer will be, it's not in scope. It's not in the plan. And that, I think, is what Scott is worried about running into, and I think that's what, at least speaking for myself, what I'd really, really, really like to avoid. And I understand that you also can't have, you know, you can't scope to do any, like, everything. But I think that's the problem with the way that we've set this up. We're constraining the process at the very, very, very beginning, before we've got the community's input, or before I think the planning commission has even had an opportunity to say what we think is important and where we think we need to dig in, and I think that's fundamentally flawed.
Fisher Wheelie?
Well, I didn't raise my hand or anything. I know, it's a lot.
I thought I'd tell you, maybe you're.
Now, um, but I, you know, that is why I keep coming back to being confused about the scoping because uh, a- and the ma- I mean, there there's the mandatory elements which are mandatory because there, I mean, there's there's different understandings to that. They're mandatory because uh, because they're in the G M A, okay, and um, and they're required by the G M A, they're mandatory. You did the checklist of those mandatory elements. Some of, some of what you said so far is still under review. You don't, you didn't, not all of them, you don't have a yes or a no yet. Some of them are still, as I recall from the checklist, they're still under review. You know, we uh have not had an opportunity to look at or or um, you know, I don't know what what our role is, and maybe this is part of it. I mean, I'm just responding as as, you know, responding to the process. I don't know where we play a role in talking about those mandatory elements that are on the checklist that are clearly, that that have to be um reviewed, or, you know, they have to be revised because the the answer is no, you know, they don't currently, you know, you've got these kind of categories. No, it it doesn't meet current requirements. Okay, we know that you're gonna be working on that. I'm not so sure where we fit into that or not, because right now we're just being asked about the optional elements. So where do we come in on the mandatory elements? And where do we come in on checking on what has to be revised because, you know, what has to be updated because it doesn't meet the current law? And then what about the stuff where it should be updated? You know, for example, a lot of these requests for client, you know, incorporating climate, you know, there's all, there's all kinds of places where that can fit into the mandatory elements. Um, they're not, you know, we could call climate optional if we were gonna call it a new title or some, you know, a new um chapter. But, yeah, that's. But but, you know, in fact, it's the problem is interweaving it into the mandatory elements, you know, a lot of the time. So, so I think there's a whole nomenclature confusion that I suffer from, you know, which gets back to this, when does scoping end, you know, because really it ends, at least according to some of what I've read, it really ends when you get to the point of presenting a draft, you know. So like, the first year is really scoping because you, it's a re- an iterative process of the public says they really care about, you know, we went out to the public and all of a sudden this new issue popped up that's really important that we hadn't thought about. You know, so it's not just us as a planning commission, it's the public too. Um, you know, and 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 so is that excluded from the scope because it wasn't, you know, in there. So I I am really confused about what scope means because there's, there's the scope that's like the scoping, the scope of work. And that, to some degree, is topical, but it's really about process. And so I I'm just getting, you know, the more we talk, the more confused I'm getting about what is it that you need from us to sort of pass on to the to the Board of Commissioners and what is the Board of Commissioners being asked to do at this point? Like, maybe, you know, maybe I would want to start with just trying to understand what is it that's being asked of the Board of Commissioners, or what are they asking of us that we can check in on? I mean, what what's really the fundamental question that needs to be answered at this point about this process? Because I'm a bit confused, to be honest, about that, like, what what is it that the Board of Commissioners is needing from us at this juncture? I don't know if that was responsive to all this previous comment or not, but.
So we do need to know and understand which optional items the planning commission does would like to be added to um the overall work plan that the board is going to direct. Ultimately, the board is gonna direct staff to begin. The mandatory or the required items, those particular chapters, if there is a concern about we won't be doing a sufficient enough review, um, I would encourage the planning commission to include language or wording in your recommendation that the entire chapter is open up and all the goals and policies are reviewed in full. That is the intent of the review for those mandatory items. We will have to open up that housing chapter, that land use chapter in full and update tho- those goals and policies. Um, the population projections, the buildable lands information, all of that has to be up. All of that has to be updated in full.
So the man- the mandatory issues or the mandatory elements can be fully open in our scope.
Yes.
But we have to recommend that those, they're not automatically.
No, that is what we as staff are recommending or proposing to the Board of County Commissioners that. The work that we'll be doing in these particular chapters is. A review of the chapter from page one to the end, looking at all of the information. Is it accurate, is it up to date, those policies, do they um. Match or meet what the community is wanting, thinking, uh, do we need to update any of those policies or any of those policies? Outdated, those sorts of pieces.
So everything in mandatory is fair game for scrutiny.
That's a good, yeah.
Okay.
What we. Also need to know is, are any of these optional elements creating an implementation plan? Um, creating a true future land use map. Um, integrating the in- industrial land study findings, um, so that there would be actual, that would actually. More, hmm, that's going to be a bad sentence, that would impact the land use chapter even more. Because we would have to do updates to that particular chapter to incorporate these findings as well as the future land use map. Uh, do you want to ask the board to create a climate change chapter or. Element, whatever you want to call it, they're synonymous. Do you want to open up the economic and the health chapters and do a review? That's what we're asking.
So I guess, I guess if, if we know that all the mandatory stuff is open for scrutiny. And you know, you're down the road, um, Commissioner Nelson says, this is the thing that I was talking about. We're gonna look into it. When it has a nexus to one of the mandatory elements.
Right.
Does that make you feel a little better?
I mean, I think that makes me feel a little better. Um, the problem is that. I have, I mean, I'll be honest, I haven't really looked at the health element since we did it in twenty nineteen. And there may be, I mean, I don't know if I can say where I'm. I don't have, and there may, I may go in there, I may say right now, I may say, you know, that's not a big deal. I may go review it and be like, oh my God, I can't believe we missed that. And so it goes back to my, at this point in time, I think the entire comprehensive plan needs to be open.
Including the optional elements.
One of the things that um I thought of with Helen's that. The scoping does have to continue until the moment that we submit a draft and maybe even beyond. Because things can bubble up that are really important issues um that. They happen fast and then they become a big deal, think about the airport. Uh, issue and, and the CAC or whatever it's, you know, that came from nowhere and became a very big deal here in Thurston County very fast. Uh, in Tidiano, the um sex offender home, that wasn't on anybody's radar, and then it was a really, really big deal. And so if we're setting our scope now. And then working through this process for a year and a half or two years. Um, we can't possibly do an appropriate job, and I don't think we can do what, what the public want us to do. Um, and so if I had to vote, I would say we have to open up all these elements and even some that we probably don't even know about yet.
Yeah, how do we make that recommendation to the B O C C though is the other thing. Uh, and then how do we still get this all done in like June twenty twenty five? Because again, without sideboards where you get nothing done, but yeah, I'd love to hear your opinion on that.
So one of my questions is, so when, when you're thinking about the resources that you need to do it and, you know, we're going to open. Everything that's mandatory. Um, what are some of the, I guess, assumptions that you're making on, like, let's say we opened everything? How deep could you actually go? How much time could you spend on that? Or have you made assumptions that like, maybe we're going to really dig into five or six of these and, you know, like. How, how much, you know, in the universe of breadth and depth? Like, how much depth do you assume that we're going to be going into in the mandatory elements? Because I think that feels to me like another space where we could make a recommendation that um. Your resource to be able to dive deeper more often.
Right, so as far as the mandatory elements are concerned, we're assuming that we're opening up all of those chapters just because of the. Um, amount of changes that have occurred um in state law and they touch. So many pieces of it, um, if they made changes to the rural element, it changes. Whole bunches of um different pieces of both the land use and uh the recreation, so. To answer your question, the, our assumption is that we're opening those up, as I said, and reviewing them. As far as the information statistics um that are in there, are they up to date? Um, are they, do they make sense? And then going and looking at those purposes, policies and goals, purpose. Um, goals and policies and reviewing each of those as well. We are starting this process now, not just to make sure that we have sufficient time to complete it. But so that we have a document that says commerce, this is what we're going to work on. This is what the money is going to go to, we have a grant that we need to apply for because immediately after we receive that money. And then somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars, we will be going out on RFP for consultant help, help.
So you think the seven hundred thousand will be able to do a deep dive on every mandatory element?
The mandatory elements and the E I S that we're um assuming we have to complete. Yes, we will need additional funding from the Board of County Commissioners to do. All of mandatory elements and everything on the list, but that is the, that's the request that we're making now.
Would there be an opportunity, say at the nine month mark, you know, come December, maybe where we can re-scope or reevaluate our scope?
Reevaluating the scope would, could potentially put us behind. Um, because we would have already had uh our RFP go out with that scope of work. Um, and potentially have um consultants starting um the research portion of the work.
Mm-hmm. But we could at any time, say in December, say, we didn't think about this a year ago. Please B O C C give us a little bit more resourcing to let us look into something new.
The resourcing would have to come at the appropriate time so that we could put it in the budget, so um we could.
So it'd be tricky.
Yes.
Well, we're looking at the twenty four, twenty five budget right now.
That is what I am being told to prepare for, yes.
So, once that budget is finalized by the county commissioners in December of this year. It's pretty well locked in unless they get additional funding from some source.
Traditionally, I am not, uh, the departments um are not allowed to request additional funding. Um, unless we meet certain um. Requirements that the budget office puts out for us.
Commissioner Pestinger, you have your hand raised?
Sorry, take it down.
So if we're going out for RFPs and contractors to do a lot of research to get the data and it points that you need to update the plan. We're looking at nine months for the contractor to do that work and provide that information to update. The plan before we get a draft to review.
Correct, but they will be not only, the vision is they will be um doing that research and. Um, crafting or identifying those areas of um needed change, but also doing um some of that public participation. So we'll need to get stakeholder input and buy-in of where um additional areas. May need or additional goals or policies need to be changed or how those goals or policies are changed.
So if the RFP that goes out to the contractors doesn't contain the right scope of work for those contractors to perform. And they're going to spend nine months updating something that. We may want to include something else in, that's the thing that I see, I mean, then you're, you're behind the power curve by another nine months. Or another budget uh. Process, that's probably not going to happen. Unless we identify what needs to be updated now to include it in the RFP. To get the contractors to work on it. You're going to have to either amend the RFP halfway through the process. Or you're going to have to let it go through conclusion, figure out what you've got and what you don't, and then go at it again, and that's a whole other year.
Yeah, we have a short timeline, it's going to be hard to get this all done. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, you know, I don't know as much about this kind of thing as somebody like Commissioner Day or, or whoever, but. I mean, isn't it the case that if you make it as open as possible? I mean, you can refine it at any point, I mean, the, the, the thing to be worried about right now is, is not. Creating boundaries we're going to regret later, I mean, we don't have to worry so much about where it lands in terms of what. They're actually contracted to do, what we need to worry about is not. Excluding anything, I mean, i- it's the, yeah, we're, we're, we're in the um. We're not in, in the what goes in part, we're in the what doesn't get pushed out part right now, it seems to me. And, and so it seems like what I'm hearing and, and what I, I think I. I don't know how to, how to put it, but we want it to be as open as possible, we don't. I mean, our recommendation to the commissioners would be, don't exclude things that might be important later.
Yeah. I, and again, I would defer to, to. Mr. Day and others, but to, to me, it seems like the RFP for this is not an RFP to build a building where we have design. It's an RFP to provide consulting to help us update our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Which could potentially include a number of different things and it could change along the way. Um, so I, I don't know that you have to define every single thing in the RFP, but you have to say we need. Uh, consultant to help us with this process.
Yes.
Well, is the RFP, is the consultant going to be open? To adjusting as we move down this process, that's the question. Because most RFPs and contracts that I've been involved with, you have to determine the scope of work in advance and that goes out with the RFP.
The scope of work is consult to the planning commission, then that would cover it. I don't know what the RFP is.
It usually within includes so many hours, they'd make a bid based on so many hours of work, okay? And then once they let, reach that limit, then you're going to have to go back for an amendment to that RFP, that contract, a change order, yes.
And the way, in a process like this, I, the way that I always like to do it is to basically build, you know, we're getting really. And like the, the scope involves an initial work plan that's based on a certain assumption about hours. So like the first thing you'll do with one of these consultances to actually like. Work out what the final like detailed scope of work is. After you've got your assumptions about how many hours it's going to be, but. A range of like time and materials contracts to like. Specific deliverables, like how, how flexible do you generally write these agreements?
As far as the scope of work is concerned or what the scope says or.
Or how, like what kind of contracting mechanism, like is it a flexible contracting mechanism? Or is it a, like, we need to sit down, decide exactly what we're going to do before we put signatures to this?
The, generally, it's um, there's a work plan with an understanding of uh what those. Uh, the work is and the deliverables will be, um. Some of those deliverables may be um a revised um chapter seven. Or it's um development of a par- public participation plan, that's the deliverable. But there will be a set amount of money.
Right.
That we cannot go over.
Right.
So with this, with the product that we're expecting to get out of them, this deliverable, would it be, would it most likely be something where they. Rewrite an element for us and give us a few different decision points and then it comes back to the planning commission, that's where we start our work. Where we start talking about, these are the decision points we want, or we want to go a different direction. But their, their work ends as soon as they hand it off to us.
So it really depends on which piece in part that we're talking about, but it could and um be. Take this chapter, provide some options so that we can bring it, because. Love you planning commission, but you're not the first stop, it's the public is the first stop. So we would bring those options to the public to get feedback on those options and it may be. Two, it may be three, and then we would bring that information back to the planning, we would refine those options. Um, and bring those options back to the planning commission or the option that seemed to be the most favorite one, if there was one. Um, and then the planning commission would respond to that particular uh piece of it. You will see this process here in the very near future with the um LTA designation, this is exactly what we'll be doing.
All right, well, we're uh running a little long, so I want to, I want to come to some sort of decisions here. Knowing that we will be able to deep dive on everything that's mandatory. And there's probably a strong desire to include every one of these optional options, optional elements. But we cannot count on the board to say, yes, you're going to get every one of them, we do need to give them some sort of idea. Which ones are the most important to us? Um, because the, maybe they do come back and say, you can have all six. And maybe they come back, say, you can all have all six, and if you think of a seventh, you can have that too, but. Unless they get that far, we at least need to inform them a little bit about what's important to us so far, so I would like to. Take uh some straw polling on each of these items at, at, at a threshold level. I know that Commissioner Pestinger has already said that there's some things there that he is not included, so that's why I think that we do need to take some sort of polling, but go ahead.
Can I just ask, the future land use map?
Yeah.
Uh, I could see that becoming a real, you know, if that were included, I could see that becoming a real focal point. Um. What kind of, I mean, we don't really have a sense of the resources that would go into each of these. Like a future land use map, that would be something that would require um. Uh, pretty thoroughgoing SEPA review, I assume, I mean, I, I mean, it's sort of. I mean, what's, what would be involved, like, what is your notion of how much resources? Would need to go into creating that map and, and what that would look like as part of this process.
So, don't have my budget in front of me, um, but um that particular item is. Um, one of the items that we're proposing to if the planning com- or if the board um. Puts that on the work plan to um. Ask a consulting company to or firm to complete, see if I can find the um. Budget real quick, because that will tell me F T Es. Yes, it would. It's going to take more uh resources to create a future land use map. Then say um maybe the economic element um re- revisions. Um, but that future land use map, if it were put on the um work plan and the. Industrial land study put on the work plan, those would get combined together, so it's difficult to tell you exactly. How many resources would be needed because some of these, we would be able to um do in tandem um together.
Can we do straw pulling on this or you want to call for the vote?
Straw pulling, fine with me.
Okay, we're just going to decide on whether or not meets the threshold with, if we should ask the planning or the board to let us look into this. On the first.
Well, I'm sorry, I still need a little clarification on the implementation plan element here too. Perhaps, I mean, could you just give a thumbnail description again of. What that, what you're looking for there?
Yeah, let's see if I can find it. Um, so this implementation plan um would be, um, and. The metrics that we would use to create our five-year reporting, the five-year reporting is required. Um, under the House Bill twelve forty-one, which was passed last year, and that's been incorporated into thirty-six seventy A, one thirty-nine A. If anybody wants to take a look at that, um, but the implementation plan would create those goals. Would be an implementation plan for the goals and policies within the comp plan. It would be a new appendix. Um, and it would serve as the, the basis. So we would create metrics around those goals and policies within the comprehensive plan. So we knew what we were actually supposed to be reporting on. And it would be the entire, cause twelve forty-one is a report on the implementation of your entire comp plan.
All right. So everybody raise your hand if you want to include if implementation plan meets your threshold. And Commissioner Pest, okay, that's.
All right.
Okay, everybody that is meets, it doesn't meet the threshold for the future lands use update, raise your hand if it does. Hey. Commissioner Pestinger. Incorporate countywide industrial land study findings.
Nice.
Okay, climate change element.
Hi.
The.
Economic element.
Hey.
Health element.
Hey.
Hey.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'll tell you what those records were.
Thank you.
On the implementation plan, eight to zero, future land six to two. Industrial land seven to one, climate change seven to one, economic element five to three, health element five to three.
Thank you.
All right, this is going to be um, complicated to say the least, but hopefully we're moving in the right direction. And it was good to see that all six of those had at least five or more, more than half. So hopefully the uh, commissioners keep that, uh, take that into consideration. With that, we've finished everything on our agenda except for.
I think I have one thing to add to that.
Okay.
Um, I'm obviously I voted to include everything. That doesn't mean that I need a deep dive into everything. But I need to know that it's an option. And at least, you know, cause the way I feel about it is if we say right now, let's, I mean, let's just take the health element, cause I, I know it a little bit, but I don't know it real well. If I find something in there that I go, my God, I can't believe we did that. Or maybe I go, wow, why didn't we do this? I, at this point in time, I think it needs to be said that we have the option to do those things. You know, and I think, like I said, I don't think it's a, it's, I don't wanna say deep dive all the time, but it's not necessarily a deep dive into every chapter that we want. But I want the ability to look at every chapter and bring recommendations for changes.
Go ahead, Helen.
Can we include a statement to that effect that, you know, that, that um, you know, besides the straw poll, that, that we agree with that? Um.
I would go sign that statement, what, what Commissioner Nelson just said.
That, you wanna restate it for Chris?
I knew you were gonna do that.
There's an audio recording.
Recording of it.
Yeah.
See, I think, well, I guess for, for the record, I'll just say, it does, that my vote and others' votes don't necessarily mean that we have to do a deep dive into every optional chapter. But at this time, we're opposed to closing the ability to look at them.
And Chris, I don't know if this is the way it's gonna go or not, but when you present these optional chapters to the board, are you going to give them um, a breakdown of what you think it would cost to review these?
We've already done that.
Okay, so they're gonna have, they're gonna see what money is. Okay, so that will inform their decisions quite a bit.
You wanna take a vote on that last uh?
I think we're all in favor of that.
Okay, we just wanna make sure.
Okay. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to reflect on some, I mean, on the, you know, and it kinda goes to my confusion about the scope of work. And um, you know, Derek mentioned that um, you hadn't read the um, the assessments.
Checklist.
Yeah, the checklist. The packets that we get, um, like, it didn't I, I like to have, this is part of my reference library. And the packet didn't really, it didn't include any of those addenda.
So we did not send, we did not print off and send that, we sent it via email because the um amount of paper that we would have to print.
That the one we got today, Pauline?
So.
The addendums, all those documents, PDF.
The one you got today was um, comments that we received from the public um, regarding the scope of work.
We gotta notice that some of the PDF files were too big to make it through email.
Right.
But then.
Yeah, but is that what she's talking about, those amendments to the?
She's asked.
Twenty. The link, right, Chris?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I mean, you know, I looked at this a while ago, and so I, I don't know if I just missed that that, that was one of them. But I'm just wondering if process wise, if there's some way that maybe we could, like, when we're sent the packets and we're sent the emails. Um, maybe there's some way that we could request at that time, you know, just like a checkmark or something where, you know, like, I would have liked to have had a copy, you know, like a physical copy of this. Obviously, there are some things that are too long or whatever, but you know, if there are, if there are parts that we might wanna have a paper copy of. Uh, you know, could there be kind of a quick way? I mean, it's just something to think about, you know, just a quick way to request that, like as part.
An email back to us.
Yeah, an email back sort of thing.
Asking for uh, a physical copy of the information because a lot of what we have, especially a lot of what you're gonna see coming forward are gonna be massive packets of paper. And uh, we'll probably be sending that information to you as links that you can get off of the website because they're gonna be too big to email to you. And um, the amount of resources to print them off is going to be extremely massive.
Yeah, I understand that, but it seems like there's, that, yeah, you could. You could do that, but I just think there's some things that are, you know, that are, that fit in the concept of how, you know, that commissioners kind of should have.
A resource library in the packets, um, the first, the memo, the memo, the first six pages for the um, and then emailed the rest of it. And if there's something that the planning commission would like to get a physical copy of, um, we can print those out if we receive a um, an email. We did that with the S N P. Um, we did that with the H C P. Um, but some of this are extremely massive amounts of documents. So we would like the planning commission to request those, um, if you want a physical copy.
Commissioner Hanson.
Oh, I was just gonna make a comment that it sure would be nice if I had a separate email where all this stuff could go. Because having this interspersed with the stuff from the P T A and the soccer and the this and the that. Sometimes I don't see it till much, much later, cause it's three pages back by the time I get to my inbox.
Yeah, and it's, it's nice to get a, like, if you have your own email and you get a you know, something was delivered, cause I, I don't necessarily remember to look on the day of the meeting for all the stuff that came in at the last minute or whatever.
Commissioner Pestinger, G F something?
Yeah, uh, thank you for not mailing me two hundred and eighty-five pages. And second, did I just miss at the last second that you said you provided financial cost estimates for each of these elements to the county commissioners?
Yes, that was part of their packets.
Is there any reason we don't see that or receive that?
That wasn't part of the packet. Um, it, the financial information, um, since the board is the um, deciding um factor on the budget, that's who received that information. You can find that information online. If you'd like a copy of it, I can send it to you.
Oh, I mean, I'll find it, but it would have helped my decision, you know, I guess.
It puts us in a really small information box. Is that, I mean, Helen asked for it and we didn't get it.
I don't remember hearing that, otherwise we would have provided to you.
I mean, just asked for it.
Just now?
Yeah, and you walked over to check and then you came back and didn't tell us.
Yeah, I don't have the budget information in front of me, that's why.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess to, if I may, um, you know, because if we're making recommendations, knowing the sort of resource base of those recommendations is kind of important.
Yeah, I would agree. And that's the primary impact of the recommendations we're making right now.
Does anybody else have anything on?
Yeah, um, just because it was brought up that we were going to be receiving a lot of electronic stuff in the form of links and not always on paper. It would be nice if we had access to wifi. So we could bring computers and if we forget something, be able to look it up.
You do have access to wifi here.
He's a guest.
There's a guest, so we can help you set that up.
I bought a laptop so I could do that.
Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Right, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Wow.